Good evening, everybody. We're pleased to be here at Rocks. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Row call. Eight of us are here. Mr. Lindgren is not. And we'll adjust that if he makes it late. Moving on, we have a presentation. Dr. Schirck?
Yes, we do. It gives me great privilege to introduce our Ringing Rocks principal, Mrs. Jones, and her group of students who are going to talk about Extra Math tonight. Welcome.
Did you need me here, Dr. Schirck? Okay, good. Oh, perfect. Great. Well, good evening, school board members. Good evening, community. And a special welcome to the Ringing Rocks students who are going to present this evening for you. So what we wanted to share with our school board this evening was something that began last year. At the beginning of the school year, the 2015-2016 school year, the teachers and I were reviewing our data. We were reviewing our school data, and then we also compared it to the PSSA data. And we were looking at the strengths and areas that could use some improvement. And we started talking amongst ourselves as a staff, saying, "What can we do? We're seeing some patterns." And we asked ourselves, "What can we do to help our students perform better?" And it clearly came to the surface that we believed that our children needed more practice with basic math facts so that their automaticity could be quick, so that they could then build upon their basic math facts in order to solve more complex math problems. So charged with that, saying, "What can we do?", the teachers investigated some applications that were web-based because we wanted to make sure that we were addressing the needs of our students, their digital natives. And so we wanted to use something that would be web-based, that would capture their interest, keep them motivated, and most importantly, ensure that they were learning the skills that they really needed to learn and master. So I believe it was Mrs. Winnick who discovered an application that had been around for a while, but we had not yet begun to use. And it was called, and it's called Extra Math. So we started using Extra Math, and we saw a lot of progress quickly. We added, and you may have seen it when you walked down our hallway, we've created an Extra Math Wall of Fame. Because when our students earn their math certificates, they get added to the Wall of Fame. Their name is announced over the morning announcements because they've successfully mastered their basic math facts, and they earn a certificate. So those are a couple of things that we really like about the program, the motivation, the natural inclination that it provides for our students to want to memorize basic math facts. And then we also like the home connection, because our children can do this at home and practice at home. So those are some of the reasons that we chose this application to help our students with basic math facts. And I'm just, I've asked a couple of our teachers to just share some, from their point of view, what they value in this, in this program. So Mrs. Winnick and Mrs. Keely.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Super excited to have our second graders here to show you their, their expertise in how to use Extra Math. Like Mrs. Jones has said, we just started this last year, and it was a great beginning for, I think, a lot of our kids. Showing their progress has been wonderful over the year. And starting the school year this year with already testing our first unit in second grade, I had 90 percent of my students pass a 36 fact-timed test with 100 percent of, of knowledge of their facts. And that, I think, is attributed to all the hard efforts of our first-grade teachers last year, our, our second-grade teachers, all of us working hard together to, to implement this with the children. They are highly motivated. Some of my students from my current class this year have already made it on the Wall of Fame. Everybody is super excited to do that and progress, and they are doing it even faster this year with having that experience behind them. So it's been a great experience so far and showing huge success, I believe.
I just wanted to add, excuse me, that we started with addition facts again, and some of the children said, "Oh, we did these last year." And I said, "Well, the placement test takes you back to the beginning, but if you know your facts, it will quickly move you through, and you'll be on the next level of subtraction very quickly." And it was amazing how motivating that was to the children. And I also have many children that are just moving along. We do it every day. Every student gets to get on the iPad every day. It only takes about five or 10 minutes for them to do it. Some of them are using it at home. And I am surprised, pleasantly surprised, at how quickly they are moving up, that they remembered from last year, which was really pretty amazing to me, that it is so ingrained in their brains that they're remembering. And we're starting to do a little bit of problem solving now, and it's very interesting that, that many of the children know their facts now. So they're concentrating more on the word problem and how to solve it, and not so much on the facts themselves, because they know them. So we are just thrilled with this program. It's a supplement to our everyday math program, but all the teachers are just thrilled with it. So we want the children to share this with you.
Okay, so school board members, how are your basic math facts? Boys and girls, we're going to have you stand up, and your teachers are going to take you over. And we'll have you stand next to our school board members. Just go on around. Tyler, we, yeah, we'll have you stand between Mr. Leach and Ms. Steely here. And just go on around. And school board members, I do also want to just make sure I reiterate that Extra Math does allow our children, because they have that automaticity with basic math facts, they're really able to concentrate on problem solving of their math problems in class. So what they're going to do now, boys and girls, at this time, I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself to the school board member that you're standing next to. And after you've introduced yourself, then you can show your school board member how you use Extra Math. Second graders, if you haven't done so already, can you give our, your new friend a chance to try and see how our school board members do? Let them try it for a second. Are you showing her how to do it, Alicia? Okay, second graders. I know some of you, I just found out, you were concerned that your scores might be messed up, but I think we'll be okay. So, second graders, thank you so much. If you want to walk, if you want to grab a treat and then meet me in the back. Okay, um, boys and girls, if you could come stand here in the middle, Mrs. Grimm has asked that we get a picture. It's a fabulous idea. So, boys and girls, come stand right here.
We'll let Mr. Brant get one with... Oh, yeah, if you want to show it, show us your score. Okay, we'll get, okay, one, two, three. Thank you, boys and girls. Okay, good job.
As we, as we transition from our math facts, our math extra facts, to some treats, I would like to take the time to refocus and give congratulations to our secondary staff. This week, we were notified that we received the Apple Distinguished Program Innovation Leadership and Education Excellence Award. We are happy that our digital learning environment program at the high school, middle school has been selected by Apple for the 2016 through 18 school year. We want to congratulate our staffs, for example, for a learning environment, innovation, and educational excellence. That, of course, was spearheaded by, by Michael, Tony, Daniel, Dr. Z, Dr. Ramich, Eric, Todd, Chris, and our entire technical staff, as well as all secretarial staff that have taken the time and effort to complete this task. It was a total team effort, and I think that, you know, Michael Wagman obviously deserves a few minutes. I know he's probably, doesn't want me to do that, but I think he, he was truly, along with the middle school and high school principal, Dr. Ziegler and Dr. Ramich, really put this thing together, got it off the ground, and their staffs really helped us accomplish this, this award. So, Mr. Wagman, if you would come up and just say a few words, I think, on behalf of yourself, I think that's deserving, as well as your staff.
Thank you. I, I really do believe Dr. Schirck is, is right in saying that this is, this was a team effort. It started with the Board of School Directors who, who supported the concept when it was first introduced back in 2012, and then ultimately approved. At that point, it was approved for as an exploratory process, and then in 2014, when we, when we launched the Dial One, the One program. And, of course, my, my staff, Tony, and our network engineer, Jason, and, of course, where the rubber meets the road is in the schools with the principals and the teachers, and of course, our students. The program really focuses on, or the award really focuses on five best practices, and part of the application process was the development of an I-book that tells the Potts Grove story. And it's everything from visionary leadership to innovative teaching and learning, flexible learning environment. And we certainly featured, you know, the renovation process at the high school, because it exemplifies a vision for a flexible learning environment and ongoing professional learning. And at this point, over the next few years, beside, I guess, really some, you know, some bragging rights, we get to use some of the logos that are approved by Apple on our, on our website, and email signatures, and so forth, as a, as a distinguished program district. More importantly, we essentially open our schools to others to see what we're doing and what works, and, and to learn from our experiences. We've done some of that, sort of informally, at, at the request of, of school districts that are exploring, but now we'll be doing this, really sanctioned by, by Apple as a, as a distinguished program. So we're really, we're really proud of that, and we're proud to model what, what works and what's really terrific about Potts Grove School District. So, thank you.
Moving on to public comment, I don't see any cards. Is there anybody that would like to speak to us today? Okay, then moving on to executive session announcements. Immediately following the September 27th board meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss personnel and potential litigation. The board met in executive session prior to this evening's board meeting, October 4th, 2016, to discuss potential litigation. Now, we're moving on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for both the board meeting of the 13th of September and the meeting on the 27th of September? Not a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing. Now we'll move on to our treasurer report.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Motion in a second. Or, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
I move that we approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $5,213,251.67 for September 2016 as presented.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions?
Comment? I'd like to just take a moment to thank Dr. Nestor and his team. Doctor...
Dr. Nestor.
Dave, sorry. I got that Dave. Dave just promoted him. Sorry about that. You earned it. I, one concern I had coming in was approving the checks with having no knowledge of what they were. And since the request, we have had much more detail and a much more understand, better understanding of what we are approving. And so I thank him for that and for answering all my questions every month regarding certain ones that I need more information on. So, again, I will be voting yes, thanks to the detailed information we've received.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for September 2016 as presented and file it for audit.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing. Moving on to discussion, Ida, the report of the superintendent.
Tonight, it gives me great, great privilege to introduce our student board reps, and they have the opportunity to give us their first update in their first month in office. So, take it away.
Hello, Potts Grove School Board, and good evening. Every Friday, we participate and are involved in a student forum with 16 other students. This forum has proved to be quite useful in gathering feedback and hearing all of the diverse opinions from our student body. Some questions that Dr. Ziegler asks in this forum are, "What is Potts Grove doing great", and "What can we improve upon?" So far, we have heard from 32 students in total, and it would be 34 if you count Mason and I. But some of the things that have come up are our cellphone policy. Overall, the students that we have talked to said that they disagreed with the policy at first, but it actually has been proved to be quite positive, and has helped students stay more focused. However, there have been some concerns in regards to certain details about the policy, such as not being able to wear headphones in class, especially if you're doing, like, individual assignments. Another topic that has come up is our academic programs. There have been lots of positive feedback about our academic programs in the sense that there are a whole plethora of, of them out there, such as being able to take online courses, being able to do MOCO, Western Center, and just classes like in high school, AP, honors, and academic. And then students have also expressed that they want more courses, such as geography, Asian and African studies, creative writing, more cultural and language courses, and just overall more creative courses in general. And one quote that was said is, "It's growing but limited." Another positive has been SWIBIS. In the beginning, it was a tedious process at first, but our school has honestly become a more positive and supportive environment overall. We're also looking into better lunch options, and in regards to dress code, Mason and I are in the process of getting more feedback on the dress code policy. We chose not to go too much in detail as we want to get a very good sampling, but we're going to start revising the wording of the actual policy in order for it to reflect on everybody's opinions.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mason. Okay, so as mentioned before, Dr. Ziegler has held student forums the past two Fridays with me, Maya, Mr. Daney, and Mr. Durenzo. We have seen some incredible results. We have heard from 32 students. It was truly eye-opening, getting feedback from people who aren't exactly in my circle of friends. So, just to move on to what they said. All right. So, one of the positives that the students really focused on was the staff. You know, the students expressed a great, deep appreciation for the staff, from guidance counselors to teachers, just pretty much everybody. Athletic programs was another positive. The students were, we heard from, really believe in the academic or athletic programs Potts Grove offers, and are related with the new choices that are coming soon, that Mr. Durenzo had reported on, like, the, the bowling and volleyball teams that are going to be started, I guess, next year. And for construction, that was another positive, because the students really believed that the new, the new renovations were really positive, the school looks great, and, and they're just really happy about it. So, there were two negatives that I pulled out. One was cognitive tutor. The students are concerned with cognitive tutor. It was actually, it had been brought up both times during both of the meetings, and it was kind of hard to move on from the topic, because one would add, and another would add, and then another would add, and it would snowball. But, you know, some said it would be nice to replace it with a different program, but as it stands, they said that it does more harm than good. One interesting thing was another negative, kind of negative, that the students wished that there was more things on paper. It was actually kind of interesting, you know, seeing, you know, that we have the one-to-one program. Everybody likes the whole laptop idea, but, you know, there are the outliers that like more technology than not. But overall, through both meetings, we saw that kids wanted to do more on paper rather than electronic, which was really interesting. We are also researching the possibility of starting school at a later time than usual. This is a very, you know, popular topic to talk about now throughout the country, pretty much. So, you know, it would, it would really be a disservice not to look at it. So we're going to look at the different research studies that come out, and we'll see what we want to do. See ya. Thank you.
I had a question in my head for Maya, and now it's already gone out of my head. So when I, when I remember it, I may interrupt a little bit later. But, but great job, both of you.
Excellent report. I second that, Mr. Rabinowitz. Do have a couple of questions. This might spark Mr. Rabinowitz's memory. The forum that you discussed, how is that, are the students picked for that, or it sounds more like it's an open thing? Is that advertised to the kids? How is it put out there to them? Is it, "Hey, come share with us your thoughts to share with the school board"? How is it approached, and is everybody welcome to come to that?
I guess I'll, I'll take this. You know, if you wanted to ask, Dr. Ziegler's probably going to be better to ask than me, but the way that he explained it to me, we base, what they basically do is they randomize how the students are picked. One meeting was seven guys, nine girls, or other way around, but four from each grade, and it's 16 kids in total. And, you know, it's a pretty, you know, I had my, honestly, I had my doubts about it at first, because I'm like, "Oh, the kids aren't going to share, you know, administration people." I just thought that it wasn't possible. But the feedback was incredible. Like, they just let it all out. And I was like, "Wow." So it's, it's pretty great. It's like a very informal, formal forum. It's very, it's pretty unique.
So it's different students each month, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yep, every Friday.
Oh, each week? Okay, great. The cognitive tutor, do you have any specifics? And I know you have individual opinions, but you have a number. I'd just like a little bit more feedback from the, to hear what they shared with you in regards to... in regards to, I think the one comment you shared was, it does more harm than good. Like, in what way in their opinion?
You know, one of the things that they had brought up, which I think they brought up both times, was the whole, when you type in an answer, if you miss like one little minute, like basic punctuation, like if you forget, or if you add a comma where you're not supposed to add a comma, or a decimal where you're not, then you're doing it again, doing it again, doing it again. You know, you don't get credit for it, you can't move on, and it's like a very repetitive process. I think that they brought that up, at least in one of them. I know that it was at least one. But, that was pretty much, I'll just say that one, that one was pretty out there, like in the open for everyone.
Last thing, just a comment. I'm encouraged to hear that there's some interest in researching a little bit the start times for the school. I'm not proposing a later start, but it is of interest to me that I was kind of looking for the right time to approach with the school board that we just look at. I know, or my understanding is all of Chester County is looking at that possibility, and we're their neighbor, so they are, you know, it seems, so I'm glad, and I'll be looking forward to hearing your findings on that. Thank you.
I had a question about the cognitive tutor as well, as far as what's specific. That was nice that you had that information. Another question would be on the, you had on the different course suggestions. At some point, if you see, you know, recurring themes that people, you listed a number of courses, it'd be nice to know if it's like, well, only one person really was interested in that, or, you know, over the course of the year, you know, one person each week was interested in that. That'd be nice to know, because that gives us some idea of what, you know, your fellow students are looking for, so.
Thanks to Dr. Shirk's notes, I remember my question, which is, which is related to the headphones in the, in the new cellphone policy, particularly at the high school, correct, is what you're speaking of? So, help me understand how the headphones would be utilized, were there to be a modification? What is it that is, what's the practical benefit to allowing them?
I see the concern with the headphones, but what a lot of students have been saying is that teachers will, like, they'll go over like a lesson or do a lecture, but then they'll go into like individual work, like maybe something on Schoology, or just individual work in general, and then if like kids are talking, or like people are collaborating, and one person just kind of wants to like stick to their own work, then the headphones will kind of allow them to block out the student voices instead, like focus on what they need to do.
So, it's, it could be a good news or a bad news thing, right? A student could use them to block out a noise that distracts them, or they could use it to block out things that they should hear, right?
Yeah, I agree that that could definitely happen. I think with the headphone policy, I think we just need to look at both sides of it, and definitely maybe restrict it less, but in a sense that the teacher can determine whether the student is allowed to have headphones or not in that particular time, if it's appropriate or not.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just say one thing, I am all over having a geography class. I just can't tell you how irritating and saddening I find it when kids can't find things on a map, or when I, I mention something like, you know, east, west, north, south, and, and I, they look at me cross-eyed, you know, because they're going, what? And it's really important to know not only United States, but world geography, and at least have an idea of it. I can't pick out all the countries, you know, I certainly can't, but at least I have a rough idea of where they are, and unfortunately, I think an awful lot of your generation does not, because we're not alone. A lot of other schools have, have dropped geography, and I, I think that's a really important class to have.
Just a quick question, not to you guys, but maybe to us as in general. Is it possible to get the student body report put on as one of the little sections, like a little doc like we have? Is that possible? I don't know what time, when you guys get it finished. It'd be a lot easier if I had it right there, so I could read it as they're going through, so I can have time.
I mean, you worked, you finished it up on Monday. Obviously, you worked on it throughout the week. You finished it up Monday, so it would have to be something, have to be dumped in late. It wouldn't be part of the prelim.
That's okay.
Okay. We can do it.
Seth, how do you guys feel about that?
I'm good with that. Yeah, I think it will give a good outline for all of you, so you have an idea of what we're going to be talking about.
Maya, Mason, thank you very much, appreciate it. At this time, we'd like to move to discussion items, number 10. Tonight, we're going to talk about our, our data that, that we received from PSSA in Keystone, and I'm going to start out, I'm going to give a little intro, and then Mr. Vores is going to, will follow, so we can pull up, pull up that particular information. We just wanted to take the time tonight to address the public, obviously, with the data results that we received this past, this past late spring and then in the summer. And one of the things I just want to emphasize to the board and to our community is, when we look at our process of data, we need to look at the whole child. That's, that's first and foremost. And you know what? It's interesting because, you know, with our two student board reps, we have to look at them as individuals, and then we have to look at those first and second graders that were with us tonight as individuals. So, that whole child takes a whole different look when you take the time to, to view that. So, we take that very seriously here at Pots Grove, and as we move forward, you'll hear more about the specific needs that we have of our children here in the district. Obviously, we always go back and we reemphasize and we talk about our mission, and obviously, it's to educate and inspire all students to excel as productive, responsible citizens and lifelong learners. And it varies, obviously, from a kindergarten to a first grader, second grader, then up to people like our student board reps who are planning their college and careers. One of the things that we did this year that we thought was very, very helpful for us and effective is, we had our district-wide data be reviewed by our administrators. They had an opportunity to dig into the scores, they had opportunity to dig in and drill down to the specific areas, and we, what we asked them to do was take a look at our strengths, because one of the things that we wanted to say was, what do we do well? Because we need to, we need to highlight and celebrate the things that we do well. We need to also understand what our needs are, okay? Where are our areas of concern do we need to do a better job with? And then finally, what are those actions, what actions can we do to help better, better, you know, basically, help our students achieve the goals that they need? And some of those actions need to be handled immediately. We've talked about cognitive tutor, you know, verbatim the last several months. We're going to do, that's, that's going to be an immediate change. That instruction in that Point Five class is going to be more hands-on, pencil, paper, if you will. The cognitive tutor will be a tool, but we're going to take advantage of that time, that extra every other day class, to actually drill down more specifically for those students. And Daniel will talk more about that as we move forward. So, again, we've, we've mentioned this in academic, obviously, nothing changed in the last two weeks. There is inconsistent student achievement in mathematics. That's what our data tells us. It's inconsistent, we need to get better. Student achievement relative to English and Language Arts has been static, okay? We got to get over the hump. We're not doing a good enough job in that particular area, so how can we get better? The student achievement gap, data among subgroups displayed on the achievement gap, that is really our big, big story here, I feel, that our subgroups we need to address. We're doing a great job at the top, okay, and we're doing a good job in the middle, but we really have to understand our students who are our subgroups, economically disadvantaged students. We really need to take a look at those specific groups and really develop almost individual plans for those students. I think the time has come, as we're going, as we look to move this, this district forward, we need, that goes back to our mission statement, all, all children, educate all. We really need to take the time to look at that, and Daniel will talk more about that. And obviously, one of the things that we can highlight is there's more students participating in AP courses and taking the exams than ever before. So, those are our highlights. I wanted to give you a little bit of introduction, and I'm going to pass the mic here to Daniel, and he's going to take this to what we're going to do specifically in these areas.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Good evening, board members. So, as we look at each of these four trend areas, what we wanted to do more specifically, and as Dr. Shirk referenced, is really dig into what are the needs that came out of it? What are the specific data points, and what are some things that we plan to do about each of those particular areas? So, rather than reading this data to you verbatim, because everybody can read, I'm not going to spend the time to go through this, but what I'd rather do is spend a couple minutes highlighting some of the pieces of information that you can see when you look at our Keystone exams for Algebra I and our PSSA for Mathematics. And there's really four things that I want to talk about as you look at this particular piece. First of all, it's important to understand that you have to decipher between grade levels and cohorts of students, or groups of students. So, if I'm looking across grade three, for example, in 2014, 15, and in 15, 16, those are different groups of students, as you might imagine, because what tends to happen? Kids grow up and they go from grade level to grade level. However, one of the things that you can see is that as you go across, you can see that in many areas, from third grade in one year to a different group of third graders in another year, there's substantial evidence of students moving, okay? You can see that again in grade four, you see it in five, six, and seven. The other thing that we look at as a district is, again, those groups of students, and for us to look at that, you almost have to move to the right and take a step down, if you will. But, it's not always as easy as moving to the right and taking a step down, because there's other things that you have to consider in here. Number one, how long have, have the students been in the district? Did they have full daycare? If they haven't been in our district, how long have they been here? So, there's all sorts of things that we can dig into that provides us more information about things that we can do. Second thing I wanted to talk about, as you go up in the grade level, and if you look down, the achievement appears to go down, okay? And you can see that in 2014, 15, you see it in 15, 16, and you see it across the Commonwealth, okay? So, what does that tell me? It doesn't tell me that kids are learning less as they're getting older. What it tells me is there could be standards that are pretty complex for students to learn. It could be an issue of looking at the test, there's all sorts of things to look at. To be clear, we have work to do, and we're going to move forward on that, but that's an interesting trend that falls out for us here in Pots Grove, and it falls out across the Commonwealth as well. A third thing that I wanted to point out here is looking at our Algebra I. So, as a reminder for you, the Keystone exams are, end-of-course assessments that are primarily taken by high school students, although if a student's taking Algebra I in seventh grade or eighth grade, they're certainly taking the exam. Those scores are banked until students get to 11th grade, okay? So, they look at an 11th grade group of students, okay? So, that's where these scores come from. So, one thing that's concerning for us is if you look at the last couple of years, our scores go down by two to three percentage points. And we're currently at about the state average, but we're never happy enough with state average, right? There's plenty more work to do. So, that's something that we've already begun digging into. So, let me go on to the next slide and talk specifically about what are we going to do as a result of these individual pieces that fell out? I'm going to talk first about the math-specific ones on here, because there's some things that we're doing that kind of carry across both English Language Arts as well as math. So, specifically, looking at procedural and conceptual, those are terms we always use in math, right? There's a procedure that we've all learned to apply in math, that's how I learned math. Just follow this procedure, follow the simple algorithm, and you get your answer. The part that I missed for math is really the whole concept behind it. Why do we apply that procedure? There's a reason the procedure works. So, as the state has informed us in looking at the shifts that have occurred with standards, there needs to be a balance. Students need that procedural understanding, but they also need to know where the procedure comes from. There's a reason the procedure works. So, it's, it's about balance. Dr. Shirk already talked about the one-and-a-half-credit Algebra I. I know Dr. Ziegler has already been meeting with math teachers to really determine a couple of things. First, short-term, what are we doing? Teachers, to be quite honest, have been given more freedom to think about, how are we going to use the time? For this year, we have time, how are we going to use that time? As a team, what do we believe is going to be most effective? I think, and Dr. Ziegler can certainly jump in, but I think the message is, in many cases, it would be more valuable with some students for me to use that time one-on-one or in a small group. Doesn't mean they're getting rid of cognitive tutor at the moment, doesn't mean they're throwing it out. What it means is, it'll become truly a supplement, which is what it's intended to be. They're also thinking long-term. So, after this year, what does this look like? Where are we going? We need their help. They're the ones in the classroom every day, we need the students' help. They're the ones learning the content. We need to tap into those resources and almost expertise to decide as a community what's best for us in teaching mathematics. Another thing that you see up here is special education. One of the things, and this is one of those things that transcends both English Language Arts as well as math, oftentimes, if you think about a professional learning day, every teacher has about nine things that they would like to get done, and usually, the first five on those lists are things in their classroom, because they have so much to do. But, one of the things that occurs is there's always competing initiatives for different kinds of teachers. So, oftentimes, special education teachers might not get the same content level or content-specific mathematics professional learning that a math teacher might get. So, that's something that we can work on internally to say, let's prioritize and provide teachers, all teachers, with the time that they need, when they need that content-specific piece. So, if I'm a special education teacher and I'm teaching math, I need that content-specific piece as well. And then, other things that we've talked about many times, just vertical articulation. What does this look like from K-12? Certainly, the high school doesn't make a decision and think about where they're going without thinking about where are kids right now in the middle school, and where are kids at lower, and where are they at Rocks and West? So, it's a K-12 conversation. So, again, in there, there's short-term and long-term pieces. Any questions before I go on to English and Language Arts?
Yeah, I have a couple. I recall, over the last few years, that there were some issues related to pacing, as it was described, particularly in the middle school, or the transition from the elementary to the middle, as well as, as at least a temporary gap in terms of the information that the students moving from fifth to sixth grade were, were experiencing, that at least had some impact on our student performance. And since I didn't hear you mention that, I was interested to know your thoughts about that, and then before you answer that, I'll also ask the other question, which has to do with, and we did discuss this at the committee, the question of what we're doing and when we're doing it for the students most in need of help, you know, particularly, are we giving the students that need extra help at the middle level, for example, starting in grade six? Are we, are we getting to them earlier than we have previously? Is it the same, or, or what's the thoughts along those lines?
Great questions. Let me see if I can remember both of them. That's okay. Remind me of the first one. Let me start with the second one, and I'm sure I'll circle back to the first one. So, thinking about what are those things that we're doing for students earlier, as it's identified that they need additional support with learning mathematics? See, I remember the first one now, having that conversation. There's a couple of things that have occurred. Number one, I know, for example, Mrs. Jones and the awesome second graders were talking about what's a very basic thing that's going on, and by the way, this occurs, I hear it in every school, is basic facts. Kids need to learn and become more automatic with those basic facts. So, that's one thing that really bubbled up again from the teachers, in terms of what are things that we can do to support their understanding of that. Two, also at the middle school, they worked this year to put into place a math seminar. Math seminar is really specific, direct instruction for students based upon some of those pieces that may have been missing, or some of those gaps that may have occurred. Three, the other thing that's been done is we've Three, the other thing that's been done is we've really put into place, particularly at the middle school, stepping stone sorts of courses. So, if you think of a student getting ready for Algebra I, there's a whole bunch of information they really need to have under their belt to be successful with that, including all the grade level standards below what occurred with Algebra I. So, now, there's courses that get students ready for that. So, for example, if I'm a sixth grade student and I'm taking Algebra I in seventh grade, for example, I can step into a course that's going to condense for me some of the learning that I would get in sixth grade and seventh grade into one course, so that I'm more prepared to take Algebra I. Second question was, thank you. That's an excellent question. So, what has happened over time as we implement these new standards? We've all heard that the standards are more complex, and the other thing that happens is they sort of ran downhill a little bit, in terms of if I'm a grade level earlier, now that content backed up for me and that's something I'm learning a prior, a year prior. What that meant is, of course, is not only did all the students need to catch up with that, but teachers were now working with different, or different pieces of content than they were working with, and the expectation changed. So, I may have been teaching that, but I may be teaching it to a different level of rigor than what I was previously teaching it. So, teachers spent a lot of time, particularly this summer, really digging into, and they get tired of hearing unpacking the standards. Some of the ladies are in the back of the room, they, they've heard me say, unpacking the standards, and when I say that, they kind of look at me and go, really? We're going to do this again? And yet, every time we do that, we find that there's things embedded in the standard that we overlook and we say, very basic things. So, for example, it might be something with measurement, and I might need to measure to the nearest quarter inch. Well, there's all sorts of things that fall out of that, like measuring to a half inch, understanding how to hold a ruler. That's a very simplistic kind of piece. So, when you think of these really complex mathematical pieces that back up over time, you're right. What it did is created a gap, not only for our students, but also for teachers learning how to teach that new information.
I have one last and then I'll move it on to whoever else. And this is less of a question and more of a comment. So, in the beginning of the presentation, you spoke about the, the need for us to focus on our economically disadvantaged and special education students, which of course overlap in some cases. And, and think of them from a more, this is my word, not yours, but from a macro perspective rather than from a micro. And, and I guess I have a challenge to you folks, and the challenge is to look at the resources and tools that we currently use in relation to those groups and consider what other schools with high percentages of students, after all, I just learned that 40% of our students are now economically disadvantaged, which is a pretty large number, but not the largest compared to even other districts in Montgomery County. What tools and resources are we not using that would work more effectively for those students? And maybe the answer is there aren't, but my suspicion is that there are. And I won't say it again when we get to Language Arts, but it's the same point for both math and Language Arts. I think that this is a critical thought process that we need to go to, go through, if we really want to have an impact for these kids. And I was pleased to hear that, that one of our neighboring school districts in Chester County, Phoenixville, is starting to think really hard along these very same lines. And while I may not agree with everything that they're doing to address the issues, I think that it's a thought process that is, if you don't think about it, then we're, we're not going to really address the issues. So, that's just my personal opinion, of course, but it's a strongly held one.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Rubenowitz. One of the things that I'd like, I'd like to see us do, and I appreciate the challenge, but I would like to see our teachers really take this year to dig in for themselves, to come back with those recommendations. I think they really need to be able to take this year and with their leadership, in the building leadership, and find out what's, what need, what needs to be done. Knowing that they have that support at this level is huge. And I think, you know, I could even anticipate that maybe even, say, in January, there might be something that would, that after one semester of work or trimester of work, that our principals will come back through their teacher, the teacher work that they've done this fall and say, hey, this is a way, this is a tool, this is what we need, and then we can bring that, that discussion back here again. So, I, I appreciate the, the support. I know our teachers do as well, and the principals, knowing that they have that ability, if you will, to, to think outside the box with all of our children, will be huge. So, I think that'll be, that'll be huge for us. Thanks.
Mr. Rubenowitz touched on a question that I had written down, as did Dr. Shirk. It seems to me would be beneficial to look at schools, I haven't seen the scores yet of the other districts. When I looked, they weren't out yet. I don't know if they're out yet or not. It seems to me it would be beneficial to look at schools that are achieving more six, more success than we are. I agree with Dr. Shirk in that and only in that. It's important to hear from our teachers, administrators, they need to be allowed to think outside the box, absolutely. We should absolutely look at that. I disagree, Dr. Shirk, if, if you're saying that we only do that. I don't see why we don't do both. Our scores are, I mean, all of middle school scores are, you know, significantly failing the PSSA, if I'm reading this correctly. I would suggest, and would like to hear from others on the board, that we do both. That, you know, I love that you're opening the teachers up, hey, we want to hear from you, but I would recommend that we do both at the same time. Talk to other districts, see what they're doing, bring back all the ideas, and then go from there.
Just one clarification. While I, I don't disagree with you, I, I think that if you're going to look at other districts, you have to look at other districts that are like us. It might be very interesting to find out what, and I'm just picking on them, Radnor is doing, but they're not really like us in terms of our demographics and, and our, also our relative wealth. So, I think if you're going to go down that road, you've got to make sure you're looking at the right places.
I do agree, and thank you. I meant to add that. I appreciate that. I also just want to expand what you had said, Rick. Subgroups, absolutely, but I, I think we need to look at the subgroups, but also our overs, overall scores are, in certain areas, really need to be looked at. So, I think we need to look at both and, like Mr. Rubenowitz said, similar districts that are finding success.
I'll just, I have, Daniel, just a question and then a comment. We did a math quality review and, and we, we did that in conjunction with a few other districts, right?
Correct.
So, I'm just wondering, there's some things up here that I can see are specific to Pots Grove, but I'm just wondering, how did we match up with those districts in the findings? And are we matching up with those districts in, in some of our planned corrective actions or, or the ways that we're going to address this? Is this a, is this a collaborative effort or are we back on our own again? How do you, how do you see that?
Well, the supports were provided through the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit is one of a collaboration. So, I go to monthly meetings with other curriculum directors or assistant superintendents. There's a high school group that comes together, there's middle school principals groups that come together, all sorts of job-alike. So, the whole, like, the whole premise really of the IU is built on this idea of collaboration. We often throw out topics like this, Mr. Alexander, where we're saying, hey, we're currently looking at our math. What, what have others of you, what are you working on? What are ways in which we can learn from you? Specific to the math program quality review, there were two other districts that went through that similar process. Their findings weren't entirely similar. There were some definite similarities, and yet, a lot of the things that are being looked at could be the same. So, for example, pacing, vertical articulation, everybody's looking at. It's just the nature of the beast right now. But, there might be other districts who are using different programs and/or different resources or materials as, as a vehicle for the curriculum. So, that might look a little bit different from our, our efforts.
Actually, sorry, another question here. This one's with the Keystone.
Yep.
And I know we touched on this a bit during the curriculum meeting, and as you just said, the, the scores, like you, they bench them. So, that what we're looking at here is scores from students that took it last year, as well as up to four years ago?
Yes, this is really confusing. It's looking at students who were in 11th grade last year, but a student could have taken the Algebra I Keystone in seventh grade, for example.
But, but that's, okay, so, so what we're looking at, though, is really results of students taking the same, a similar test, different years.
Correct.
Using different programs, possibly. Have we looked at anything to see students that, not students that took it in seventh grade, or 11th grade last year? Have we just simply looked at all the students that looked at, took it last year, just to see, are we progressing in one direction or another? Because, I guess, you know, if you're looking at some from four years ago, what was taught at that point, might have been a different procedure, different programs being used, so, you're not really comparing apple, I mean, I understand for comparing to the state, because the state's doing it for everyone else, but for us to see if we're actually, you know, if cognitive tutor somehow is actually helping, I mean, you, you know.
So, part of your question, I think, is looking at the individual information that you have within that larger group. So, for example, do we take out seventh graders who took the assessment and eighth graders and see how they perform with the majority of students who are in ninth grade taking Algebra I Keystone? Yeah, we take those pieces out. Have we gone back, I don't know, Dr. Ziegler, in your conversations with math, the math department, have you gone back to say, where did these students have different programs in their time here at, in Pots Grove?
Look at the students that are at the high school and try to identify them and track them. We don't go all the way back to seventh grade. There's only, it's a smaller population in seventh and eighth grade that's actually taking it. But, we do try to track, you know, and follow the students and identify where they're at, what course they're in, and how they're doing.
I'd also point out that our results are typically pretty good with our seventh and eighth grade students who take these classes, because the reason they're taking it in seventh and eighth grade is they tend to be advanced math students, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to note there is a trend that we're seeing.
They haven't made it 100%, but they've come pretty close, you know?
Yes. No, that, I agree with, and just so if the high school, you're following all the ones in the high school, just to see, last year, every student that took it in the high school, this is how we did compared to the year before and the year before, just to see trends that way. That's what I was just asking, so.
One of the other questions I had was in regards to the 1.5 for the Algebra I. In the curriculum committee, we actually discussed possibly doing a 1A and a 1B, like a ninth and a tenth splitting it up. Is that still going to be under consideration for long-term?
Correct, correct. That, that was one of the things that we were going to look at moving forward. I know the math department in high schools is looking at that this fall, and our hope is to have a recommendation, you know, January, so that we can get that in a program of study for the next school year.
Reason why I ask is obviously that's going to have a lot of budgeting involved, teacher movement, stuff like that.
Possibly.
That's an excellent point, too, because even when, when you consider something that appears to be little, like a 1.5 credit, that can have rather large effects on the overall building schedule or individual student schedules. So, there's kind of a trickle-down effect, in, only meaning that you're planning for students to fill that other half, if there is another half out there of their time with something else. So, it's, that's a great point.
Before we move on, can I, I'm sorry, maybe you were going to touch on this. I just want to request, I don't want to go backwards, but just in fairness to the administration, if we can give direction, does anybody disagree with requesting that they look at other similar districts? Just because Rick and I spoke up, but fairness to them, we need to, you know, if there's disagreement, we need to discuss further.
Yeah, I, I just want to add, Mr. Parker, that, you know, I don't disagree with anything that you're saying. In fact, I think that's definitely part of, part of the scope and sequence of our, of our work. What I didn't want to do originally was just jump, jump in and say, okay, you know, I wanted to give the teachers a, a start, you know, you know, we've just been in schools, you know, September, one month, give them a start to work in their PLCs, work with their principals, and, and definitely, that would just be part of the scope and sequence. I think in fairness, that, I don't think that would be an issue for us moving forward at all.
I hear you. My hope is just that time-wise, it, it's not something we take multiple years to do, that we really focus and have a plan in place for next fall. If that's what you're thinking, I agree with you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you all. The only thing I would caution is that you, you want to, and I said this to the staff, we want to, we want to get good at something, like we want to be, whatever we do, we want to be good, and, and whatever we decide, and I just don't, I don't believe it's going to take years, but it's going to take some intense, you know, research and study to come back with a recommendation. So, I just want to make sure that we're, we're coming back with the right information, what's, and doing what's best for our kids. So, we'll, we'll definitely just move that right along.
I'd like to just get out there first and say, I will strongly fight against anybody that tries to impose a 1A, 1B algebra thing on this district again. We did this a number of years ago. You know, the, the original idea was, it was a small group of students, 25, 30 maybe, that need extra help that would really benefit from this. And over the course of, I think, three years, it grew into the majority of the rising ninth graders taking that 1A, 1B. And then, when the Keystone's came in or when the SATs needed trigonometry, none of those students got to trigonometry because they spent two years on algebra. It's, it's kind of a simple thing. You've only got so many academic years, and by the time you get to be a junior or a senior, if you don't have that trig, you're going to have trouble on your SATs. So, eventually, that was abandoned and we went back to having one year of algebra. So, you may consider it all you want. I'll vote against it each and every time it's presented.
Just curious, based on, on the notion that it's a slippery slope to, to everybody taking it, is that where, I mean, it seems to me that if, as.
It's not a notion. It's not a notion, okay? It's actually what happened.
Well, it may be what happened, but it doesn't mean that's what will happen a second time, as long as, you know, we're.
Human nature has changed in eight years, 10 years? I don't think it has.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure it, it comes down to human nature. It comes down to careful.
Everything comes down to human nature.
I think that if we, if there's careful thought and consideration as to why we're doing it and who we're doing it for, that it might be something that could be better managed, especially having learned the lesson of what happened the last time. But, you know, you, everybody has to vote their conscience, for sure.
So, moving on to English Language Arts. Again, I'm not going to read this to you, but I did want to take just a couple of pieces to highlight. First is the overall trend that Dr. Shirk already noticed in that, looking at it, it appears to be static. So, there appears to be a little movement from year to year when you compare one third grade group with a different third grade group, or one eighth grade group with another eighth grade group. Also, when you step to the right and down, there's not always wonderful things happening there. So, what are we noticing? A couple of things. Number one, at the elementary level, we're right about at or just above the state average. And please don't misunderstand, state average, Dr. Shirk said in the, in the, the committee meeting last, was that last week, two weeks ago, when we had this broken out in terms of green and orange, he said, let's turn the screen green first. Because sometimes, I know from my time sitting in PLCs with teachers, they look at these percentages and they, they get down. So, our job is to kind of say, we can do this, we can, we can make a difference, and we do make a difference each and every day. So, that's part of the, the process that we're going through right now. So, when we look at the state average, how do we compare to that? What are things that we can do to get above that state average, first of all? Okay? So, again, appears to be static, elementary just above, or just a tiny bit below the state average, and then what happens in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is similar to what's happening in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade across the Commonwealth. Clearly, we have work there to do as a district. So, just as our mathematics teachers are digging in, having conversations about what we're doing, it means our English Language Arts teachers will dig in and have conversations. Much of the same conversation we had in terms of math, in terms of the standards backing up and that, that what occurs for teachers and students as a result of that over time is relevant to this conversation as well. When you look at our Keystone exam literature, now, for the most part, students are taking this particular Keystone in high school, okay? So, you can see from one year to another, there's about a 4% drop there, however, still above the state average by about six percentage points or so. By the way, that's pretty consistent with, again, the state that you see literature is, performs at a higher level than Algebra I does. So, what are we doing relative to English Language Arts? Again, I talked about a couple of pieces that are specific to this in terms of pacing, vertical articulation. I talked about special education and regular education teachers having conversations. One thing that our K through five group has done and spent a, a good amount of time doing, we have a team called our Elementary Literacy Communication Team, and they've really looked at and dug into everything that we're doing within our literacy block. What are we doing when kids are? What are we doing when kids are working with words? What are we doing when they're reading guided reading books? What are they doing when they're reading books on their particular level? And what they did was make some pretty specific recommendations about, how do we move forward? How do we enhance the things that we already have going on? So, that's a conversation that continues, but again, we don't make decisions in isolation just about K five. That becomes a conversation with, how, what does this look like in six, eight? And then the other piece is learning from our literature teachers, using the expertise we have in the district. So, we have content area teachers at the high school, for example, who are experts in literacy or literature. How can they insert communication about this process, using the experts we have within the district to build our own capacity? I'll go to advanced placements. So, again, I'm not going to read the numbers to you, but a couple of trends that I just wanted to note. And this was, quite honestly, a topic of pretty lengthy discussion at our committee meeting, curriculum committee meeting, a few weeks ago. And for good reason. It's one of those areas that we need to look at and say, is what we're doing appropriate? Is it working? How do we get better at this? So, one of the things is our number of AP students has doubled since 2012, okay? So, that's wonderful. What does that mean for kids? It means kids have more opportunities to, to take really rigorous coursework that they weren't offered before, or they didn't take advantage of before. So, that's a great thing. The other thing is the number of students scoring a three or higher, which is considered passing, has greatly increased. As a result of that, one of the things that you can look at in the final row there is seeing that our percentages dropped back to where they were back in 2012, 2013, only now we're doing it with far more students. So, the conversation that we had during Curriculum, Technology, and Student Affairs was really a couple of conversations. The first was, are we absolutely sure that every student who's in an AP course is ready for an AP course? So, Dr. Ziegler shared that there are prerequisites that are in place, there's conversations that occur with students, with guidance counselors, with administrators, with teachers, about what that looks like. Another piece is, that's a piece of curriculum that's really defined for us, and it's one that you can't really get a whole lot away from the pacing, because it, the College Board is what it is. As a result, pacing moves pretty fast. So, if we jump back to the original concern, if a student's not ready to take that, what does it mean? I, as a teacher, need, possibly need to slow down. So, there's been reports of that, and I know that we're looking at that very critically at the high school, and we're thinking about it very, I guess it's a philosophical conversation in terms of, what do we believe as a community in terms of how do we make a difference for kids? One of the things that I think, we feel, is that we want students to have as many opportunities as they possibly can have, but we want to do that making sure that there are structures in place for them to be successful doing that. So, I just did English Language Arts and AP in one kind of breadth. Are there any questions? Let me pause there before I go on to the next piece.
I, I have a, a couple comments, if I could. I'll do this one first, because we're still on the page, but I had voiced a concern about this months ago, and I think you kind of touched on it in what you just said, Daniel, but we did increase, we, we more than doubled the number of AP students since 2012, but most of that increase came in one year. And that was, that was when I brought the concern to the table, which was, are we biting off more than we can chew? The number of students with, with passing AP scores dropped from 76 back down to 58%. So, it looked like we were steadily increasing, and we were also steadily increasing our success rate with getting students through those courses prepared. Then we hit a huge bump in the number of classes we offered, the number of students that were taking them, and we dropped off on the, on the percentage of students with a three plus, and just speaking from experience in my house, these classes come with a lot of stress, a lot of past midnight nights on homework, and, and while it's all great, I will say, you know, having a lower percentage at three plus might also, well, not might, but it, it probably is, correlates to their letter grade in the course, too, which affects the GPA, even though it's a weighted course. So, I'm not saying, I, I don't ever think we should go backwards. This was a monumental leap here. My only comment would be, maybe we have to think about slowing the train down. I don't know how many more there are we can offer, but we really did take a big leap, and I think we took the little hit for it, two maybe. So, I just, I just wanted to, to kind of bring that concern back.
Can I respond to that one before?
Sure.
So, first of all, the, the one thing that's great for me is, the reason we look at data is exactly this conversation. Suddenly, when we begin putting some of these things in front of us, we begin to ask questions that we wouldn't otherwise ask. So, I greatly appreciate everybody here, as well as our teachers, we've all been having these conversations to say, sometimes looking at data is uncomfortable, but it's, sometimes it's really fantastic in that it provides a little bit of a clearer picture that would otherwise be pretty muddy. I lost my train of thought, but there was another, there was another piece to that, Mr. Alexander, Alexander, I forget what it was, it'll come back to me.
I have total confidence we'll get back up to 76 and continue to improve from there. My only point was, if we're looking to add more, more AP offerings, because I know there's an interest, we just heard it from the students, to, to have more offerings, can we keep up? Can we keep up with that?
So, you brought me back to my train of thought, thank you. My board update, that you'll have the privilege of reading later on this week, actually, one of the things I talk about is high school course proposals, because right now, Dr. Ziegler's working with his staff on identifying courses that we want to look at for next year. And his charge to, to the staff is really looking at it through a couple of lenses. Number one, college and career readiness. So, wherever kids go after high school, how are we going to prepare them for that? One, which is allowing kids to have greater student voice, so thinking about that. One that really focuses on all students, not just focusing on the top, focusing on students who are behind in their learning, focusing on students who are right there on target. We need to make sure that we're providing opportunities for all of them, and then really looking at courses that offer some diversity, so that students have opportunities to learn those pieces as well. So, I know Dr. Ziegler, in working with his staff, is already thinking about what that looks like in terms of, maybe it's not another AP course, maybe it's a direction some other, for some other courses to look at.
Okay. And, thank you.
Is that fair, Dr. Ziegler?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing I want, if, I had a question about the, the English and Language Arts PSAs. The comment was that the scores were static, but I'm just looking at the numbers, they, they don't say static to me. If you, if you look at them, you know, there's, there's almost a 15% drop between third and eighth grade in both of those years, and if you do the ones to the right and step down other than one of the year, there's six, some significant drops there, where actually, the state average is fairly static, with only, you know, a 3% drop over, over those grade levels. So, the math did really track with the state, and then that makes me wonder about the test itself. It's not a reflection on a school district, if the whole state is having the same problem, but in the case of ELA, I just, can you explain more why you're, why you're looking at those results as, as being static?
Well, one of the things that I was looking at when I was saying static, I was comparing like a one third grade group to a different third grade group, for example. You're absolutely right. There are, there are places in here, probably many places, where there, there's a drop. Then we get in the conversation about statistically significant, and it's always hard to have that conversation, because the tests, the cutoff scores change from year to year. So, for example, in math, we saw some grade levels jump from, I think one was 39% to a 56%. That's huge. We can call that statistically significant, and that, we get into all the algorithms behind testing and all that. So, when we look at this, you're absolutely right, there's places in here we need to work on, there's places in here that they dip, they go down. What are the ways, what are we going to do to improve those pieces? Great point.
Pete, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad Mr. Alexander brought us back to that, because I didn't speak up, because I, I kind of figured there was something more coming in regards to what you're sharing with what the plan is for the English, the ELA. I'm not, myself, and, and I'd like to hear from the others, I'm not feeling real, I don't feel like there's a plan in place, a strong enough plan to really make some changes. I, I, I don't know, I, I think we, as a board, need to give, put a little more pressure to have a little more in-depth plan, so this can really get changed around. I, I mean, this is not, I, I, to use Al's line, this isn't acceptable to me, but if I'm the only one feeling that, then, but I think we need to give the administration more direction, more pressure to say, we need something a little more than this. What's going to be done to get these scores where they need to be?
Well, I hear, I hear, you know, I hear it loud and clear. I think I, I started off, I start off by saying, first of all, you know, I think when you look at the percentage of students, and Daniel, help me out, we've had these conversations, it could be one, two, or three students.
Correct.
Okay? So, it's not, out of 250 students in a class, we, to, to get us to the state average at this point, as, as a, as a first goal, if you will, it could be as little as, as two or three students. It could be as matter, even drilling it down to one question, okay, where they're like, they're on the cusp. It could, it could be that, that significant, as far as, or that, the number could be not that significant. So, one of the things that we challenged our teachers was that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we want everybody to get two more kids. I mean, because we, we have to, we have to try to focus specifically on those students. We have to focus on two groups. And, and again, I speak with experience as a building administrator, because this was constantly, this is constantly on Bill Ziegler and Dave Ramage's mind. So, you have the kids who are over the threshold, okay? The 501, the 1501 people. You can't, you have to prevent them from falling back into the 14s, and the 1498 people, you need to get them to ask, answer one or two more questions. And I, and I think here at, at Pots Grove, one of the things we need to do is to, and I've said this, and, and, you know, it's really, at this point, it's really what I believe in, what is, what, what I've had success with as a building administrator, is I've asked, I've put it back on the teachers to make the fundamental changes in the classroom, to drill it down and have them make those decisions for those kids, because they see them, they, they talk to the teachers, and, you know, the second grade teachers talk to the third grade, they know what's coming, the fourth grade, third grades talk to fourth and so on. So, that's, that's our, that, that vertical articulation is conversations. But we need to have our teachers drill down in their specific classrooms, and, and Mr. Parker, you, and support them with tools and resources, as well as other exemplary programs or models. We have not done that. So, I, I ask, I ask that you give us a chance to do it, because in the, in the month that I've sat in this seat, we have looked at more data than we've ever had before, in a way that has been a grassroots effort, where we spent countless hours in effort with our teachers and with our building administrators. So, I think we're off to the right start. I think we, we know what we need to change right now, when it comes to Keystone, you know, Keystone Algebra, we know what we need to do in ELA at the high school right now, Dr. Ziegler can tell you right now, the bio, and then I know that, you know, Dr. Ramage can say what his teachers are doing right now in eighth grade, right now in seventh grade, but the, the, the challenge then is, is to, what's this look like long term? And that is, teacher engagement in the classroom, number one, and then what's tools and resources can we use to supplement and help our students become successful? So, you know, I accept the challenge, I mean, I, and I think our, our administration would accept the challenge, our, our building principals and our teachers, but for us today, I think we, we need the opportunity to, to get it done for you. Because before today, before, before, you know, the last month, we really haven't had that opportunity to, to, to have our own leadership take, take the bull by the horns and get it done. So, I, I feel confident, I, you know, I've been here two and a half years, but one thing I know, I've worked with teachers for 32, and I know, I know that the, the names change, but the effort and the heart of our, of our staff and the teachers in general don't. So, you know, I, I accept that, I, I think it's a great, I think it's a great challenge for us, to be honest with you, and I think that, given the opportunity, I said, I, I think we can make some changes. And, and another thing I think is important is having consistent data, you know, so, every year, there's like a different field. What I'm trying to do is create a data review book, okay? And with the board's help, you've helped us, everything that you, you know, everything that you need to know from us, and then everything we need to do to answer your questions, so that next year, we know what the expectations are from the board, and we also, the teachers know what the expectations are from the administration, and then therefore, we continue to level the playing field so that we can best, you know, suit, you know, serve our students. And that's really, that's really what, for me, what it's all about, is what can we do in the short term, what's best for students, and what we do in the long term, what's best for students? And that's really how I go to sleep every night, because if I did deviate from that at all, and get, get caught up in, 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 in the realm of everything that's happening, then we're going to miss a piece. So, obviously, I feel strongly about that. I've always been one to accept challenges and work, and I think the people that I work with would echo the same. So, I, I appreciate your comments, I really do.
I just want to, first of all, say that I've noticed a big change here in Pots Grove in recent, in the recent time. I find it encouraging that we are focusing on empowering our teachers to help us find the solutions that work. The subject of cognitive tutor came up as an example, of something that, that may not be working as well as we had hoped when we purchased it, and working with our teachers to offer alternatives is, I think, the right way to go. I will just say that as it relates to Language Arts, and this is not a surprise to Dr. Shirk, I think that, that we really need to focus at the elementary level, we need to consider our two and a half hour block and the opportunity cost that it provides in relation to content area instruction. You know, on a personal level, I have a sixth grader who just is very enthused about middle school, and one of the things that he's most enthused about is he gets Social Studies and Science every day. And, you know, I didn't prompt him for that, that's what he came home to me for, with, and, and, you know, I find that instructive, and I think that, that to the extent that we don't currently, because we focus so much on learning about the habits of good readers and all the things that we do, I just think it's critical that we consider the opportunity cost in terms of content information that ultimately leads to better vocabularies and better reading comprehension, or at least that's an alternate theory. So, I don't want to spend all night talking about it, but, and I know it's not news to you, but I, I think that, that if we don't get it down, down in the K through five, then I question whether we're ever really going to get great in, in, in this area. And so, you know, however, you know, we can't change everything all at once in order to, to address every single issue, we have too many. So, does anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, real quick, before we move on. The first question was on the AP data. You went from 100 students to 170 students in this past year. Do we know how many students are actually taking AP classes this year?
Do you know that offhand?
We do have that, I don't have that offhand.
Do we, do we think that's another significant increase, like, like 70 again?
I don't think it jumped that much, because we asked for this last year, but I do think it will be up above.
Okay. So, the reason why I asked that question was, I think there's been enough studies that show that the larger the class size, possibly the poorer the students learn the material. And my question just is, is our class size increasing in the, in the AP classes? Because I know we used, it used to be where you had eight, 12 students, now are we having 23, 25 students in every one of these AP courses?
It really varies, but generally, the section numbers may increase, but not as much the enrollment in the actual class. We try to keep the class sizes down, but we will increase sections to, to keep that number down. number down. Yeah. And we met with our teachers to talk about, you know, making sure that students are appropriately placed, and pacing, and everything like that. But we, we keep a close eye on that.
And last question is about, obviously, the reason for taking the AP courses, and for more students to take the AP courses, for their college readiness and such. However, I have yet to see any stats showing, and I know it's on our SPP profile, our college readiness scores. Do we have those scores, and do we know what, are they increasing to go along with our AP classes increasing?
I don't know.
I don't know if this is in front of me. I would want to check before I, before I share.
Well, I bet you I'm going to say what you're about to say, which is the AP, the class size is, is relevant as it relates to the AP classes, but then there's also the potential impact on the non-AP classes in terms of class size. As you get more students taking AP, you know, how does that impact on the class sizes in the academic and the, and more teachers teaching AP classes? How does it impact on the academic and on the honors classes as well? And I don't know if that's what you were going to say, so I'll, I have one more comment on AP, but I'll let Ashley speak first.
This is also concerning AP, but also dual enrollment. Couple of years ago, that's, you know, we were hearing dual enrollment, dual enrollment, and, you know, what a great deal it is, how awesome it is. I don't hear anything about it anymore. And I'm wondering why? Is it because all the focus has gone on to AP? Is it, other than, I mean, that's the only thing I can think of. Personally, you know, I wonder if dual enrollment would be better for some of these kids that maybe aren't quite ready for AP, because there's no big test at the end, that they, you know, that's a must-pass kind of test. Of course, they have to end with a C average in order to get their, their college credit. But it might be easier to end with a C average in a dual enrollment class than to score a three or higher on an AP test, especially if they're in multiple AP classes, because they're taking those tests in a one-week time, which can be very stressful, without a doubt. So, I'm just curious. Whatever happened with, I'm sure it's still there, but I, I don't hear about it anymore.
I can see that. I'd like to brought that up. Actually, our dual enrollment numbers have increased dramatically, to the point over, last year, we added a bus to Montgomery County Community College to, to get students over there. We also increased our opportunities inside the school. There's requirements that we have to have with Monco to do that, but we've worked very hard. Forensics is a great example. Our forensic course is off the charts in enrollment. That's a dual enrollment course. Our world history course is a dual enrollment. And we could certainly bring to you what our dual enrollments. I think part of the issue is, we're looking at data that's presented to us by state and college board. But I agree with it. Dual enrollment is a key spot, and something that we've been very aggressive in increasing the opportunities for students, both at the high school and at Montgomery County Community College.
Then, my last point on AP that I wanted to make is, I actually looked up the article that I referenced earlier in relation to what Phoenixville is doing to address economically disadvantaged student performance. And I just wanted to take some highlights from this, as it relates to AP. I'm not espousing what is in this article, in the Mercury, by the way, as my own opinion, but rather pointing out to the rest of the board that it's an alternate point of view to the point of view that we're, that, that we should be careful about which students are taking AP and, and trying to limit the numbers, as opposed to grow the numbers. And their approach is to grow the numbers, and in fact, what they say is, students, they regularly invite students to take more AP courses in high school, even if students might not think they're ready for college-level courses. "It takes a while to work to be able to support them and encourage them to take that risk," the superintendent said. "It's a non-typical risk for them to take, but it's an important risk for them to take." "Approximately 80 to 90 percent of students rise to the occasion by earning a C or higher in a college course," Fegley said. He said, "While it's certainly not about raising average and above-average students, it's also working on raising our students who are having more challenges in academics and in life, to reach those high levels and find those doors of possibilities that they don't even know exist, because they don't." And again, I'm just saying that we have a neighboring school district not too far away that is strongly raising the bar for students that maybe even we're not raising the bar for. And I don't know if that's the right way to go. I'm not suggesting it is. I'm just suggesting that it's something that somebody else is doing, and something for us to think about, because it's the alternate side to, it's sort of the opposite approach to what some of us have been expressing concern about with our AP, and maybe more in line with what Dr. Ziegler has been trying to do. So, I just thought it was a useful counterpoint to some of these discussions, and I wanted to raise it here. Does anybody else have any more questions or comments?
Actually, I do have a comment, and it was regards to the efforts that the teachers are taking to have our administration have a plan. I just wanted to bring something up that, for those of you that were not at the curriculum meeting, the data was presented to us, and you had spoken about a meeting that you, I think was before the school year started, or right at the beginning of the school year, with the teachers, where all the issues were brought to the teachers' attentions in each different building, and they, I forget the exact three columns, like, well, the first was what the problem was, what, you know, how, what they thought was the issue with it, but then also, it was plans that they had come up with based on those, that they would like to implement to tackle. And so, the teachers have already been working on this, on individual plans for each different item. I mean, the middle school one was like two, three pages long, there's so many of them. So, for those of you who weren't in the curriculum, they, there was a lot of, a lot of discussion by, amongst the teachers. I just wanted to bring that up for those who weren't out there.
Can I just ask, because I had to leave during the meeting, are we, and I've heard it, this hinted at a few times tonight, are we suggesting that the teachers have not looked at the data in the past, have not made the plans? Because, you know, I mean, if that's what we're saying, and they're doing it now, great, but I don't think that would be the case.
The past is the past, I say, we move on.
But I, I agree with that, full-heartedly. But my concern is, let's not put blame on any one thing and say, and stay in the box and say, okay, well, now it's, you know, now the problem solved, let's continue to brainstorm, think outside the box, which I, you know, I think we're, we're doing, looking at teachers, looking at other districts, looking at other programs, other resources, and that just limited to, well, now we're free to do such and such. That's my only.
Got a few questions on the AP in particular. Total AP students, is that 170 individual bodies, or are those person courses?
No. One student could take multiple tests.
Understood.
Or multiple courses.
170 is number of individual students enrolled in all the classes. One student might be one, one student might be three, another student might be two. Okay. How about the 99? Is the 99 the strict number of passive tests taken that were passed? Or is that correlate to the?
There could be multiple students again. It could be a student who's taking more than one assessment.
So, I could have, I could have one student who took three tests, who passed three of them. I could have another student who took one test and didn't pass it. So, that, these numbers don't really mean anything to me, as they're presented. They're an aggregate phony number, in terms of measuring the performance.
Are you, I'm just, what Bob just said, are you saying that the 99 is how many tests were passed with a three, or is it AP students that took the scores with a three or better? So, that's two different things. Test scores with a three above, or students that scored a three or above? Which is it?
So, the total AP students, Mr. Lindgren, that's the number of AP students that took the test, not the number of AP students in our school. Okay? So, I just want to clarify that point. So, like, the data that you're looking at is all about the test takers. The second piece is the number of exams, obviously, that's why you have, you have students taking two or three different exams. And then the next piece is the number of students that scored a three or higher on last year's AP exams. So, they, that's students, that's not test. So, like, one student may have scored three or higher on two tests, or was one on three tests.
Right. But that's Bob's point, is, so if one student took five AP classes and scored fours on all their tests, then that's four tests that received a four, but it's one student that did it. So, wouldn't it be useful to look at this from the perspective of the total number of students, the total number of classes taken, first of all, AP classes total, not based on individual students, but based on the total number, and then the total number of tests with scores of three or above? Again, not, not specific to students, but specific to the total numbers. Is, that's what you're saying, correct?
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to parse the data so I can figure out how we're doing, is really what it boils down to. And, you know, there's, there's so many things that aren't covered here in terms of, have we added one or more courses, you know, from, from 2015 to 2016? Have we added new teachers who weren't previously teaching AP classes? Because if I've got a, if I've got a teacher who's, even if they're a subject matter expert in whatever, this is their first year teaching an AP course, there's a learning curve for that teacher. So, they, they are not going to enjoy the success that somebody's been teaching an AP course for 10 years is going to have. So, I understand that we've dropped from 76 to 58. I'm not sure what that means. And this doesn't tell me what that means. I mean, it's nice to have a summary, but it's kind of in a vacuum, in terms of information that it tells us. Going back to some of the points that were made earlier about, you know, the teachers and doing all that thing, I guess what I would say is, tonight's presentation from the second grade was, you know, one of the things I love about being on the board the very most, is seeing the excitement of the children, seeing their parents and how proud they are, and really contagious is how proud the teachers are. I mean, that's why so many became teachers, is for that feeling of seeing the kids learning it, and getting it, and improving so very quickly. So, I know, as you said, Dr. Shirk, the teachers are excited. They want this opportunity to look at all the things. They know what they need to do. They know who the kids are at risk. They know what their roadblocks are. And what we need to do is empower not only our building principals, but also the administration to remove the obstacles from the teachers, so that they can do the things they need to do to have more success. You know, we go back to, like, the English curriculum. Again, I don't follow all the nuances of every single test, how they change, but if you're taking, how you ask the question in a, in a language course is going to determine, you know, what the answer is. And if you're not taught what the, how to decode, what is the question, what answer are they looking for, you know, we also, shorthand for that is teach to the test. Especially in language, that's a very regressive thing. You can't just automatically pick it up in one grade. It's got to be brought forward, you know, so that's, I think that's what you were trying to talk about with the articulation. And there, and that's the, you know, trying to bring people up to speed on that. So, it's not surprising to me that we would see some dropping in the scores. We did see the one class, I guess the rising fifth grader, the fifth graders, this year's fifth graders, actually improved both in language arts and math. They're the only ones that went up in both scores, and so that's, that's good. We're doing something right with that particular crowd, or maybe they're a slightly above-average group. So, that's a good trend to watch. I, I would, I would refrain from giving specific direction, or dates, or benchmarks right now for, for the administration, to the teachers. I think we're turning the ship a bit, we're, we're righting, righting the boat, and it's going to take a little while. I think people are taking in deep breaths, and they're starting to breathe a little bit easier, and they're trying to see what they can do, and where, where the, where the boundaries are. And I think it's time to give the superintendent, and the administration, and the teachers time to explore that and to come up with their things. I think we'll be very pleasantly surprised if we give them encouragement and give them support, and not deadlines and, and hard marks to hit right away, in my opinion.
Certainly a productive discussion about test scores, and never a dull subject. Is there anybody else before we move on? Let's move on.
Okay.
Come on, Daniel.
I'm sorry. So, one of the things I just wanted to say, very quickly, is, we talked about an achievement gap. That achievement gap exists here in Pots Grove. It quite honestly exists across the nation. And when we talk about an achievement gap, we're really talking about students who have IEPs. We're talking about students who are economically disadvantaged, and we're talking about students coming from various ethnicities. So, we need to do a better job. In the last couple of weeks, you may have seen a debate on TV between some people, and these kinds of things will come up, because that exists across the nation. We don't take these things lightly here in Pots Grove, and I know our principals have really dug into looking, I don't like to call subgroups, subgroups, but they've really dug into not only looking at the holistic data, but really looking at particular groups, and how we do a better job of particular groups as well. And then the last piece I just want to end with is, Dr. Shirk really started talking about the whole child this evening, and one of the things, and I, I shared this exact slide with teachers, I think, on our second day together, because one thing that you can't see in the data is all those awesome things that I'm privileged to see each day in Pots Grove, and that's the, the collaboration, the thinking, the sharing, the reflection that I see teachers engaged in each and every day. I have the great privilege of going into all the buildings, sitting in with teachers during their PLCs, sitting in their classrooms, and I cannot tell you the level of expertise and professionalism among this group of people in really giving their heart and soul into what they're doing. So, the comments about empowering them, because they care so very deeply, as we all do, about what our kids do, and to steal Dr. Shirk's words, moving forward together, that's really what we, we've all become about. I walk into classrooms now, I see this message posted on people's boards. It's in my office, it's in Dr. Shirk's office, it's in the principal's office, and that's very moving and inspiring. So, thank you for your comments and your discussion about how we can do a better job in celebrating the things that we are doing well.
Thank you for your hard work, too, Daniel. We appreciate it.
Okay. Moving, moving forward, I wanted to take this time to discuss the instructional coach position. We had an opportunity to discuss the instructional coach at our curriculum meeting a couple weeks ago. I wanted to bring it to the full board tonight, to discuss it again, in hopes that we can move this forward for vote at the end of the month. I really feel that, you know, that the, the administrative team took almost a year to analyze this position, and, you know, I think it came to fruition at the curriculum committee, you know, with a group of teachers talking about the importance of the instructional coach, what it does as, you know, for the classroom teacher, and how it helps them move forward in the classroom. You know, one of the things that we really feel that we need, you know, with this position is someone with a, a background in technology, someone who's been to forefront of, of, of that, and can help teachers, you know, you know, work, work with our staff, because of the, the different technologies we have now, really K-12. So, our recommendation is going to be to fill this vacancy, you know, with an instructional coach, and move this thing forward, and, and get this person back in our classroom, helping, helping our teachers and students.
My feeling on this is that we discussed this in quite a bit of detail during the budget discussions in the spring, and we charged the administration to consider this position in, in contrast to other possibilities. For example, do we have greater needs in special education was one of the ideas, but not the only one. And so, what we basically decided was to empower the administration to make this call after giving this further consideration. So, what's occurred is, they did just that, and, and made their recommendation. And then in addition to that, at the curriculum meeting, some of our teachers spoke up quite passionately in favor- So what's occurred is they did just that, and, and made their recommendation, and then in addition to that, at the curriculum meeting, some of our teachers spoke up quite passionately in favor of the need for an instructional coach specifically focused on technology. So to me, this is something that we just need to do. We said we were going to do it. We, we said, go forth and figure this out. That's what's been done, and we all nodded our head to that during the budget discussions, so I don't really see why it would be any different now. But, as always, we're a board of nine, so anybody else have any thoughts?
I just wanted to have clarification, is the plan still to incorporate him, Michael, with the Apple Coach, as in the Apple Coach may be possibly leaving after this year, and this particular instructional coach will work almost hand-in-hand, so that if the Apple Coach leaves, and the Apple Coach is only here 13 weeks anyway, our instructional coach would be able to do that role and the instructional coach pretty much for however many weeks that we have class?
That, that's exactly correct, and I think it's a given that the instructional, the Apple Coach, his work will come to an end at the end of this school year, so this is a good time to bring an instructional coach in to work closely with him, and then carry, carry that work forward next year and beyond.
And lastly, if I remember correctly, I know it wasn't mentioned, but for the other board members that may not have been here, I believe we had discussed that this could possibly be part of the Title I funds, and thus not maybe make a, as big a dent or any dent in the budget.
Well, there, there's two components. First off, the position is budgeted. It was budgeted last year, we didn't fill it for most of last year, and it is in the current budget as well. So, we don't have to worry about that. Certainly, we may find a, a person that might be compensated at a slightly higher level, there is a chance of that happening, but there is a position there for it. Probably would not qualify under Title I, but may, depending on where they're working, if they're working in a, Title I is an elementary program here in Pottsgrove, so, and it's geared towards educating the students. Title II, however, is training the, training the teachers, and I think it would fit, I think it would fit in there. However, that, just to be totally above board, that grant has been shrinking the last couple of years. So, but there, there may be some room there to, to help offset the costs.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion that we authorize the board to start looking for candidates? So move.
Have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions?
Actually, I do have a question. If the Apple Coach is only here for 13 weeks, when does that person go away, and will we actually have an instructional coach, assuming we get candidates, hired prior to those 13 weeks? I mean, I'm still for the instructional coach, so don't get me wrong, I'm just asking though if someone thinks where we have two weeks to hire the person in order to actually have, make use of the Apple Coach, that's all.
Last, last spring, we went, we went through the process with several in-house candidates, so that's where we would start. We would start with our in-house candidates, and depending on the role that they would have, there would have to be some transition built in, you know, for that particular teacher who we'd be replacing. But, my hope is that, that we'll be able to make that work, you know, overall, make it work, so there is a transition, not only for the, the teachers who, this, whoever the successful candidate would be, the transition for the classroom, and then also the transition with the Apple Coach. So there's two parts to that, but I, I feel we, we can get that done.
Anybody else? Motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
All right, our next piece on tonight for discussion is the proposal for two new sports in the school district, bowling and girls volleyball, and I'm going to basically have Mr. Durenzo come up along with Mr. Alexander, our chair for co-curricular, and give you the opportunity to ask questions regarding this, this information in these programs.
Mr. Durenzo, I just want to preface the whole thing with an apology, because last week, when I reviewed this with the rest of the board, I put some numbers out there, based on the notes that I had taken, and they don't match up with the numbers in the PowerPoint presentations. The reason for that is that I did not include the supplemental salaries, I just included the cost of the program, so the, the numbers I presented were accurate minus the, minus the supplemental to the people who fill the roles of coaches for those programs. So I just wanted to let everybody know, if they, if they did read the PowerPoint and they saw the difference in the number, that's, that's where the difference was. So, I was kicking myself when I, when I saw the attachment, that I left that out last week.
So I'll explain myself out of that then, I guess. Just to give you a quick overview, this has been a discussion for the past five years in our building with, with regards to girls volleyball specifically, and throughout the transition of our renovation project, we have had a number of intermural girls volleyball programs that were unpaid, volunteer advisors and teachers came in and basically led the program. So, that was really the impetus behind the, the start of, of girls volleyball. The second component to that was, as many of you know, our conference has expanded. We added two additional school districts into our league, Norris Town and Upper Marion, which puts us at 12 teams. That allowed us to move into a more divisional format. And with that came, we inherited two other school districts that had girls volleyball, so that put the total number of school districts in a 12 conference league, eight teams had girls volleyball, the four teams that did not were us, Upper Perkyhome and Pottstown, and, I think, what's the other one? Weird Town, thank you. So we really started talking about this last spring in the committee, and with the, with our facilities completed, we have some very, we have excellent facilities to be able to manage this, as well as we believe a, a solid interest in our building. I am an advocate for activities and student activities. I think we heard from our, our student reps, good job, very good report, by the way, you guys. There is some excitement in the building, so we were looking to add both girls volleyball and bowling. The impetus behind bowling has been, we have, in the last few years, our Health and Wellness Foundation has been advocating for lifetime sports and those types of activities in our building, and, and that agenda has been moving forward to get our kids moving and, and to do things, you know, outside the classroom, which again, I'm an advocate for, and I think I believe in very strongly, that, that helps, we were just talking about the whole child. And bowling's a little bit unique, because it offers a different type of, of student to participate in activities and still be considered an athlete, and I think that's important too. Not everybody fits into the individual athletic kind of stereotype, and I think bowling offers a, a unique framework for students that aren't participating in athletics, an outlet and a program to, to be involved with. I also know that many of our students are involved in bowling right now, as I've, I'm learning the sport myself. I use bumpers, but apparently there is lanes there that, that have, the ball, the ball falls into, so it's been a very good process, and I, I'm, you know, we're looking for a support of the board to implement them next year. The reason why we're here now is, we would have to implement them before the, the start of the year, so that we could become a part of a schedule next year within our conference. Did I forget anything as far as what we were talking about in committee? So, I'll open up to any questions that, that you may have.
I get my titles mixed up, Title X affects...
Title IX.
Title IX, I was close, okay. How, so girls volleyball, how are we covered in regards to, you got to offer either the same or similar?
Well, right now, we're compliant with Title IX. We are at 20 sports and we're, we're compliant, so this would actually put us more on the female side, because bowling is both male and female, so this would be on the plus side.
So we have two different sports we want to add. Can you just verbally remind us of what the costs are?
For bowling, and I, you know, I want to talk about that a little bit, the total out, outlier would be approximately $20,000, and that's an annual, that's an annual operating budget. But I want to break that down. There's transportation, obviously we don't have bowling lanes here, so it would be very similar to golf and swimming, where we have to transport students to and from a facility outside of our, of our, of our district. So that would, the transportation, we estimated about $5,200. And the other part would be the rental of the facility, just as we rent Blackwood Golf Course for golf and YMCA for, for the pool, that would be about a $5,700. So the, the two largest components of that, as well as salaries, which would be the third for the, for the advisors and the coaches, make up primarily the expense of, of the bowling program. If we move into the, the girls volleyball program, there is a, there is a one-time fee to, to make sure we have the equipment that, that we would have to, to place in our, in our auxiliary gym, and that's where I would recommend that we, that we practice. We already have the, the sleeves in our main gym that we could, we can conduct events and contests there, but we would need to modify our, our gym in the auxiliary gym. And the budget for that would be about $17,000 for an annual operating budget, and that includes the transportation to and from events, the officials, and the game workers that need to keep score, et cetera, as well as the coaching salaries.
How much is that one-time fee?
$8,200.
Okay, and then, this is just women's vol, girls volleyball?
Girls volleyball, yes.
And we're not considering boys volleyball?
Not at this time, right now, I mean, we'll look at it, and again, I like to, I like to see participation, and I like to see that there's interest, and I think sometimes we say this would be a nice thing to have, but really, is there truly any interest in it? I think there, over the past five years, we've seen interest in girls volleyball.
Okay. I'm actually going to make a motion that we approve both of these programs, with one caveat, the caveat being that the one-time cost be covered out of our Market Street Funds.
All right, I'm going to second that.
We have a motion in a second, and of course, anybody with questions or comments now would be the time.
How do you foresee this affecting your budget for next school year?
Affecting it? Well, if you add to it, then I will be able to certainly pay for it. It's really just like any other sport, it's really just like an additional part of the sport, and we do a, you know, every year we do, do a disclosure that basically does an overview of what we spend for everything, so it's really just a percentage, it would be a similar percentage to the other sports that we currently, that we currently fund and operate.
Gary, with the volleyball, the games would be played in the auxiliary gym?
No, no.
In the big gym?
Correct.
Oh, okay, but just practice in the auxiliary?
Right.
Okay, because I was just curious about...
And it's a fall sport, so really in the fall, we have adaptive PE in, in the auxiliary gym, so it's really a nice site, that if we have inclement weather, where we would go inside the main gym, they would still have a dedicated facility to, to, to practice each night, and then our games and events would be held in the main gym, where we have more, more stands, et cetera.
And afternoon timeframes, or, I mean, I guess...
Well, it can be both. It's, right now, the eight teams that, that compete in, in our league, both in the afternoon and in the evening.
And I just have a comment. One thing that I love that you've done, Gary, and is just look outside the box for the students. What's out there, what's the future, what are the kids into now? And I think it's fantastic, I really do, it'll be really welcomed here, I know it will.
I would just add also that compliments to the, to the committee and your work with the committee on moving this forward. I think, based on what I've heard from community members, this, this is a very welcome addition to our, these are both welcome additions to, to what we offer, and I'm very excited about it as well. So with that said, if there are no other comments, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Durenzo.
Middle school sportsmanship?
Yes, would you like, yeah, feel free, that's our next, our next comment about District One Sportsmanship Award from middle school, please.
That, that's an award that Pottsgrove has received in the last four out of five years, and we're very proud of it. This year, the middle school is the recipient of it, and basically, it's an overview of what other people think of us as far as being good sports. So this year, the middle school was the recipient, and again, we've, we've done it at the high school for the last few years, and it's nice that it's, the message is being passed down to the middle school parents, students and coaches, that sportsmanship matters in a scholastic athletic program, so very proud of it.
Gary, I just want to say, and I say it every time we get this, thank you for the work that you do, and, and your team, all the way down through the coaches and the advisors, it's so important, personally, having three kids in a school district and going through some of these, having them go through some of these programs. You know, the number of professionals, athletes we produce is pretty small. The number of full college scholarships or partial college, college scholarships is small. It doesn't go for every kid, but to have 30 kids, or 30% of our students participating in these programs, and reaping the benefits of the life lessons they learn in sportsmanship and teamwork, it's invaluable, I, I believe, you know, we said it tonight already about the whole, the whole child, and it, it just adds so much to their playbook for life. And, and I very much appreciate all the work you do to support that, and make it so pervasive in this district, and I appreciate it personally, you know, from the benefits that my own kids and family have, have reaped from being in that kind of environment. So thank you and congratulations again. I hope I hear this every year that I, that I'm in this district, that we get this award, it's just a great thing, thank you.
Well, thank you to the board, I appreciate that, appreciate your support, makes a big difference to our kids, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Moving on to action items. 11.1...
Remove to the combined all personnel.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments or questions?
Only comment I wanted to make was in regards to the item 11.1, I wanted to say, obviously, thank you very much, Michael, for the years you've given our district, the bringing and the incorporating the Dial Program and everything else in the technology, is going to carry on for years to come, and obviously, this was brought by, a lot of work by you and your team.
Here, here, Michael, I, I don't, I can't even imagine this place without you, but, but congratulations to you on your next endeavor, we wish you all the best, I wish you all the best. I've learned a lot from you in my years here on the board, and even before I was on the board, and, and, you know, just want you to know that it's really appreciated.
I'd like to just piggyback on that, Michael, you and I started together in 2009, and you were ready after, that's it, after my cancer treatments, that's right, but I just thank you so much, I've learned so much from you, wherever you go, you're going to touch people, and it's just wonderful, so I wish you the very best. You'll be missed.
Any other comments? All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Okay, moving on to action items. Business, 12.1. The recommended action is to approve the construction invoices for the Pots Grove High School renovation project as presented.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Quick question, and I've, I've told you I was going to mention this in the punch list. How are we doing on our punch list as of right now?
As I indicated, we don't have ownership of the punch list yet. It's still in the hands of the architect. But we've seen a lot of the finished items being completed. They're still working in the auditorium on some of the lighting issues. And we have still some terrazzo, some finished work that needs to be done around the base of the, base of the building. But we are, we do have it on the, on the punch list. We're monitoring it. We'll be doing a review and walkthrough in the near future.
I'm presuming none of these are final bills that we're paying for work for anybody that's not done with their work, right?
No, as you can see, there's a balance to finish on the bottom of each one of those. That's how much we owe the contractors beyond what we're paying on this, on this invoice.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Action items 13, education, conference attendance. The action recommended is to approve the conference attendance items as presented.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Question on the third conference. I'm voting yes, certainly, on the first two at least, thanks to the detail that was given and explanation for why we need multiple people to go. But on the third conference, it talks about needing three staff to go to cover different grades, which I understand, but we have more than three grades. Would it not be wise to send the instructional coach, one of the instructional coaches instead, who can then present the information to all grades at various times?
I think that, you know, we felt, and Dan, you correct me, that, that, that these, these three teachers can then basically go back to their colleagues and spread the word a lot quicker, you know, possibly than setting up time, breakout time with an instructional coach. So, you know, it's, it's more covering a whole K2 grade, a one, and a two. So that was our, that was our thought. It was just, it was basically a better way for us to, to share those teaching practices and supports in math with, with our teachers and students.
Is this conference just for K to 2, do we know? If you know offhand, if not, that's fine. That's fine.
There is a, there is actually a K2 strand as well as a 3-5 strand. I know I did put it out to lower as well for their interest. I don't, I could have some sitting on my desk that came in today to represent 3 through 5. Just to add on, our instructional coaches do attend some professional learning through Montgomery County IU, all sorts of places. We want to make sure, though, that we don't invest everything or build all of our capacity only with our instructional coaches. We want our teachers to have opportunities to those same professional learning experiences. So we're trying to balance the opportunities that everybody has to better themselves.
I hear that. My concern, and just for future thought, Dr. Shirk, is that these three teachers are covering three grades, and they're going to bring it back to their departments, but we have other grades that are going to miss out on, possibly, you know, unless they're, we can use them in some other way. So I'll vote yes this time, it's just one vote anyway, but if we can consider that in the future.
All right, then I'll move to combine the, all three conferences. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions beyond what's been asked? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Item 14, committee items, operations and facilities.
These are just minutes, right?
That's correct.
Move to combine the minutes. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing. New business.
All right, I'll go then. I do have one piece of new business. It's not actually, let's say, for the board, but it's more for something I brought up in the social media sites, and hopefully, we have a lot of people that'll actually look at it. This year is a lot different for our seniors going to college next year, and the FAFSA actually opened up on October 1st, something that all seniors definitely should be already looking at. You should actually already be, have your tax, your parents should already have their tax records, because you're using your tax records from 2015, which were already applied. So you should easily be able to go into the FAFSA programming and actually fill everything out online, retrieve it right through the IRS data tool, and actually start applying immediately. Because the state of Pennsylvania, from experience, as my parent, my boys are now in college, is the earlier the bird catches the worm, it's the exact same thing with the money. You have to, money disappears as it goes along. So you want to get your application in as quick as possible. The second thing I wanted to bring up is a lot of our students hopefully are going to their guidance counselors in regards to the differences of what we call EA, ED, ED1, ED2, and special privilege EA, which is the special cases only at a few colleges. But you need to know exactly when your applications are due, as in the fact of the, a lot of the scholarships are due by November 1st or November 15th. And there's a lot of money out there, just by getting your applications in, that you can earn. All right, just something that, make sure that the students are going to their guidance counselors and asking about those.
Just a comment on that. Could our reps, would you guys be willing to bring that back? Make sure the counselors are putting that out, that students are aware of that. I'm sure they are, but maybe for your, you know, what you guys are doing.
I actually had one thing, and it's for you, Dr. Shirk. And it's something I've actually been meaning to bring up over the last few meetings. And that is that when we had our meeting last year in relation to graduation, we made some short-term decisions that were specific to the graduating class of last year as it related to the, the subject of prayer and, and our new approach. But I think that we also sort of checked a box that we were going to revisit the issue this year as, when we had more time, to come up with a more permanent approach to how we handle graduation. And I wanted to make sure that we don't wait until May to consider how we're handling graduation this year while there's still time to have student involvement, student rep involvement perhaps, you know, class leadership involvement, and come up with an approach, perhaps it's the exact same one, it was a beautiful ceremony, but, but one that works for everybody within the confines, of course, of the law. So it was more of a request that, that that ball not get dropped. And perhaps it hasn't been. I just wanted to make sure that, that we remembered that we hadn't made a permanent decision last June. We made a temporary one with an eye towards looking at this more permanently. So anybody else have any new business?
Rick, when it comes to that, actually, I would think that a perfect place to start the discussion would be the Student Affairs, which is the curriculum committee, and possibly putting that on its agenda in the near future.
Could I make a suggestion that the administration first have some time to consider it and then be able to present to that committee?
Just real quickly, Dr. Ziegler and I, really, we had some conversations already regarding graduation, you know, process procedures. So we have started that and we'll, we'll continue to do so and bring something to the committee. Yep.
I could just have one second. One thing I was, as I had our student reps here, and I was talking to Matt, would it be possible to have them have their own email and put on the website, if there's any students or parents had any questions for them, and put their pictures out there on our website?
Dominic had his own email last year, so I'm having a meeting with Mr. D'Renzo and the student reps, and we'll be taking care of all that. We're just getting it set up now. And while I'm, while my mic's on, I don't know if any of, any of you saw the article that Evan wrote about the Pottstown School Board and the, what is it called? The Twist for a Cause?
Twist Challenge.
The Twist Challenge. The, the, what's that? Hey, I have a medal at home that I won on a celebrity cruise for twisting, so... Don't challenge me, I'll win. Anyway, we have been challenged by Pottstown. Pots Grove has been challenged by Pottstown. So I don't, to twist, you twist for 36 seconds for, what, 36 children? Is that? Children. And apparently, it started out as like a mascot thing, right? Like a-
Yeah, mascots for the cure.
Mascots for the Cure, and it's sort of snowballed, sort of like the Ice Bucket Challenge from a couple, from what, last summer, two years ago? So I just wanted to let you guys know, you might want to start practicing.
Because I don't know, I really don't know much about it, except for the stuff I've read.
Me either.
Is it for awareness, or is it for us to try to raise money?
Ask Evan.
Like the Ice Bucket Challenge, you could do the Ice Bucket Challenge and donate no money. You could just do it and then pass it on. Or you could do it, I think the idea originally was if you, if you refused the challenge, that you have to pay money. And that's how it would work, and so you were left with the unpopular choice of having ice on your head or getting out your checkbook. But I think now the general idea is you do both and, you know, either donate or don't as you're able to do.
I'm not planning on, like, planning the whole thing. I don't have any idea how Pottstown did it, but just figured, I read that and-
Bringing the Falcon here, and if we could do that, and we can do some type of donation thing, that'd be cool.
I'm all for it as long as Evan's right up front leading the way.
Well, I'm sorry, I have to reflect on the objective. I'll be happy to judge.
That brought right out of left field. Anybody else have any new business?
Hi. Oh, you can go.
You want to go? I just wanted to, probably everybody in the room's seen the newsreels and everything about what the football team did over at Pottstown over the weekend, and I just wanted to, again, I guess it's an all, all sports night at the meeting, so thanks for coming, Gary. But what a great showing of doing the right thing, and thank you to all those players, all the parents, all the, the people that lead our football team, and all the people at Pottstown who had a, had a part in just doing the right thing and making, not just one, but a lot of people feel great about living in this 19464 zip code. I just thought it was a great thing to see. You see them all the time now, right? Because it goes on all over the country and it's spreading, and it's just, it's good to see a bunch of young people doing right and living right. So I just, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who made my day by letting me see that on my television and, and on my Facebook page over the weekend, so thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to promote an event really quick. So I'm the president of Spark the Wave, which is a community service organization. And on October 14th and 15th, we have a family night hike. And basically, it's like a fun alternative to like a scary Halloween event. So we have like crafts, we have storytellers, we actually have musical guests this time. So if you have any elementary school children or even middle school, or if you just want to come see what we're all about, feel free, so. October 14th and 15th, it would be the arboretum, yeah. The hours, it would be 6 to 9 p.m.
Any old business, any more, anybody who wants to give a public comment?
Actually, yes, thank you. Well, not that anyone's here from Ringy Rocks, but I'd like to thank them for supplying wonderful food and for coffee. That was much appreciated.
All right, meeting adjourned.